The 22nd meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. At this time, we will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Gibson. Thank you, Counselor Gibson. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the signup table. The council will take a dinner break this evening at approximately 7:00 PM. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or any other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. At this time, we have proclamations. There is a few proclamations this evening. And the first proclamation is recognizing Veterans Day, and the entire council will be reading this proclamation. And those that are here to receive the proclamation, Deputy Secretary Ellen Martinez, Charles Powell, President of the Albuquerque Chapter of Veterans for Peace, and any others that are here to accept that proclamation, would you please come to the front to receive that proclamation? Welcome, and thank you for being here. And the proclamation reads, whereas Veterans Day is the day we observe to honor our military veterans, the men and women who served the United States Armed Forces, and...
Whereas Veterans Day coincides with other holidays, including the Armistic Day and Remembrance Day, which are celebrated in the United States and other countries to mark the anniversary of the end of the World War I, and...
Whereas more than 65 million military personnel in two opposing alliances fought the First World War from July 1914 until November 1918, and...
Whereas World War I was one of the deadliest conflicts in the history of the human race, where the total number of civilian and military casualties has estimated around 37 million people, not including the millions more who were wounded or disappeared and were presumed deceased, and...
Whereas 2018 marks the 100th anniversary of the First Armistice, which was signed on November 11, 1918, between the Allies of World War I in Germany and France. The First Armistice went into effect at the 11th hour on the 11th day of the 11th month, marking the end of major hostilities on land, sea, and air.
And whereas Armistice Day is commemorated each year on the 11th of November with the ringing of bells at 11:00 AM to symbolize the desire of peoples around the world to hold to a peaceful future away from war, the ringing of the bell also serves to honor all military and civilian victims of war, as well as recognized veterans and active military service members, and...
And whereas the United States made Armistice Day an official holiday in 1938, the U.S. holiday was formally renamed Veterans Day in 1954, and...
Whereas the Donald and Sally Alice Thompson Chapter of Veterans for Peace in Albuquerque has coordinated with the United Veterans Council of New Mexico to ring a bell 11 times at 11:00 AM on November 11 at the Veterans Day Ceremony at the New Mexico Veterans Memorial this year, and...
Be proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby proclaims November 11 as Veterans Day and recognizes the 100th anniversary of Armistice Day.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Would anybody like to make any comments? You're welcome.
Thank you very much, President Sanchez and Counselor Gibson and the whole council. In recent years, Veterans for Peace chapters across the country have been trying to restore armistice to Veterans Day, often by ringing bells at 11 o'clock on November 11. Here in Albuquerque, our chapter has rang a big bell that is said to weigh over 200 pounds, borrowed from the UNM Alumni Letterman's Association. This year, because of the 100th anniversary of the original Armistice Day, we are trying to make it special, so we've requested churches across the state to ring their bells at 11 o'clock on Sunday, November 11. In line with that, we deeply appreciate the proclamation from the council that is indeed helping to make this Armistice Day special.
President Sanchez, members of the council, I am Jack Fox, Secretary of Veteran Services for the State of New Mexico, and on behalf of 160,000 veterans in the state, and especially on behalf of the families of the 14,000 New Mexicans who volunteered, went overseas in World War I, and the 500 who never came home. I thank the city for remembering the significance of the sacrifices of those men and women so many years ago, and to point out that 100 years ago, as I stand here, that combat was coming to an end. And again, so many lives were lost, and I appreciate you taking the time as a city to remember that, and especially to remember the sacrifice of our New Mexicans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? If not, you can come up and receive the proclamation. Okay, the next proclamation is recognizing Diabetes Awareness Month. Betty A. Miller, the district coordinator, New Mexico Line's Diabetes Awareness Program is here to accept the proclamation. Welcome, and thank you for being here. Proclamation reads, whereas each November, communities across the country observe National Diabetes Month to bring attention to diabetes and its impact on millions of Americans. And whereas an estimated 30.3 million people of all ages have diabetes in the U.S., with 7.2 million not aware or did not report having diabetes. And whereas approximately 241,000 of New Mexico adults have diabetes, and 603,000 people have pre-diabetes. And whereas gestational diabetes is a type of diabetes that develops during pregnancy, and mothers who've had gestational diabetes need to know that they and their children have an increased lifelong risk of developing type 2 diabetes. And whereas about 1 in 10 pregnant women are diagnosed with gestational diabetes. And whereas the symptoms of gestational diabetes are hard to detect but very important to address, and... Counselor Borrego.
Whereas 2018's National Diabetes Month is focused on promoting health after gestational diabetes. And whereas the International Diabetes Federation has identified diabetes as one of the major health and developmental changes of the 21st century, with potentially life-threatening complications, including heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas type 2 diabetes can be prevented or delayed, and the effects of type 1 diabetes can be managed through lifestyle changes that include healthy eating and exercise. And whereas together, we can help change these statistics by highlighting the triumphs and daily challenges of the millions of Americans living with this chronic illness, and remind people who may be struggling with the demands of managing diabetes that they are not alone. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes November as National Diabetes Month in Albuquerque.
Thank you, and I appreciate the council doing this particular proclamation. I'd like to introduce our state chair for New Mexico. This is Linda Coenko, and the president of our Board of Directors, Bobby Richardson, past district governor for the northern part of the state. My job has been a number of things. I'm the district coordinator for the Diabetes Awareness Program, and we are going to have on the 10th our second Diabetes Awareness Expo in the Manzano Mesa Multidirectional Center. It's a mouthful. I always say, give me some initials to say that. But we'd like to have anyone who is interested or has a family member that is interested to come. We have 10 professional doctors who are actually interested in distributing their information. They're going to speak. We have 23 vendors who are distributing information that they have for their interest in diabetes. So please, we have, it's going to be free screening, blood pressure, glucose training. We have the Kidney Foundation is going to be there, donating. We have the Blood Mobile, which was going to be there for several hours. We have exercise, because we know that exercise is one of the really important things, and diet. We have the dietitian who is going to explain diet issues. And I think Linda would like to have a little word to say too. She's muttering over here.
Go ahead, proceed, Linda.
Yeah, my name is Lyne Linda Coenko, and I'm the Diabetes Awareness, New Mexico Line Diabetes Awareness Program Chair. Our mission is to provide education, awareness, and prevention of diabetes in our New Mexico community. And this is our second annual Diabetes Awareness Outreach Program in New Mexico. It will be held at Multi-Generational Center, is Manzano Mesa, 501 Elizabeth Street, Southeast Albuquerque, New Mexico, starting at 9:30 AM until 3:00 PM. And we will have two doctors, medical doctors, will speak about diabetes and associated diseases, about the complications. And we have about eight diabetes educator licenses to speak about different aspects of diabetes. We will have the Kidney Foundation's joining us, the Department of Health, and American Diabetes Council Committee, also the New Mexico Diabetes Chapter, the Albuquerque Chapter, the ADA, will be joining effort with us to outreach about the awareness and preventions of diabetes. Thank you.
Well, mine's real short. This organization started by these two ladies here, so I may be the president of the board, really, I'm their bodyguard.
Thank you. We'd like you to come up and receive your proclamation. Okay, let's go and move on. The next proclamation is recognizing the Arts Board 40th Anniversary. And here to accept that proclamation is Sherry Bergeman and the members of the Arts Board that are here to accept it. And the members that are here, we've got Bill Sabatini, who is the chairman of the Arts Board, Jonathan Sanchez, who is my nephew and godson, Dorothy Stermer, Matt Carter, and Dan Fuller. And the entire council will present this proclamation, since we all have members that are appointed to the Arts Board. And I will begin by saying, whereas the Albuquerque City Council voted to approve the original art in municipal places ordinance 40 years ago on November 6 of 1978...
And whereas, the continuing purpose of the ordinance is to encourage private and public programs to further the development and public awareness of and interest in the fine arts, to increase employment opportunities in the arts, and to encourage the integration of art into the architecture of municipal structures, and...
Whereas the Art in Municipal Places Ordinance established the 1% for art set aside in the capital improvements program, as approved by the voters of Albuquerque through the general obligation bond elections, and...
And whereas the Art in Municipal Places Ordinance also established the Albuquerque Arts Board, an advisory board appointed in joint cooperation by the city council and the mayor, which is tasked to make recommendations to the city on the acquisition of works of art, and...
Whereas the Art in Municipal Places Ordinance also established the Public Art Program to manage the city's works of public art in municipal facilities, and...
Whereas the Public Art Program, with 1% for art funds, has acquired nearly 1,000 works of art, including a brand new one this weekend in uphill, from nearly 770 artists located throughout every city council district.
Whereas the fine works of the Public Art Program can be seen from the Albuquerque International Sunport to the Sandia foothills and the western edge of the city limits, and...
Whereas our city offers the natural beauty of the sky, the Rio Grande, the volcanoes in the Sandia Mountains that enchant and even dazzle, while the public art collection finds its strength and beauty in reflecting the spirit, diversity, and creativity of the people who live here through the city's natural beauty.
Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby proclaims November 5, 2018, the 40th anniversary of the Art in Municipal Places Ordinance.
Yay!
A lot of great work over the past 40 years. Would any of the board members and staff like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, counselors. I'm Bill Sabatini, a current chairman of the Arts Board. I would like to thank you for this commemoration, and I'm sure everyone behind me feels the same way. We have a very strong organization that's established in the city for all these years to execute this program, and it's been highly successful, one of the most successful in the country. And I think it's important to acknowledge that, because I think that the heart of our state and the heart of our city is founded in the arts. Too many times, we don't think it's important, but it is very important, and this kind of program proves that we're committed to that. So thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. Sherry, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Mr. Chairman, members of the city council, thank you very much. We would like to thank 40 years' worth of city council's support for this public art program. There have been times in the past when it's been questioned whether or not it's a good asset for the city of Albuquerque, and truly 40 years proves that it has been an asset for the community. I'd also like to express acknowledge and acknowledge then thanks for all of the administrative support for this program. The program originally started out in the library department, was moved to the planning department, was then moved to CIP, which then became part of the Department of Municipal Development, and for the last eight years has been in the cultural services department. So the program has withstood many transitions, and we really greatly appreciate all your support.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other comments by board members? If not, you can come up and receive the proclamation, and thank you for your service. I thought my nephew might want to say a few words, but he's shy. Okay, let's go to the next proclamation, and that is recognizing Prematurity Awareness Month. Here to accept the proclamation are Harold Pope Jr. and also Ayesha Smith. And to read the proclamation will be Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just add that Harold Pope Jr. is the chair of the Board of Directors, and he's also one of my constituents. And Ayesha is the senior development manager of March of Dimes. So the proclamation reads, whereas March of Dimes leads the fight for the health of all moms and their babies. March of Dimes does this by supporting research-leading programs and providing education and advocacy. And whereas March of Dimes has developed a collaborative model to study and prevent premature birth through groundbreaking research at six prematurity research centers. And whereas March of Dimes is committed to mobilizing the nation by amplifying the voices of women and families. And whereas in New Mexico, the number of premature births, 2,371, has continued to increase for the past four years, bringing the preterm birth rate to over 10% of all state births. And whereas New Mexico received a grade of C and a disparity index ranking of 1.07 on the March of Dimes 2018 premature birth report card. And whereas in New Mexico, March of Dimes has worked extensively to eliminate racial and ethnic disparities. And whereas March of Dimes looks forward to partnering with the council of the city of Albuquerque in response to the continued crisis of premature birth awareness. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes November as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 17 is recognized as World Prematurity Day. Would you all, would someone like to say something?
Yes. I'd like to thank President Sanchez, Counselor Borrego, and the rest of the city council. I'd like to also recognize Debbie Owen, she's one of our members of the board, Stephanie Tayes, who's our past chair for High Heels for High Hope. I'd also like to recognize Mark Fidel, who is our new chair for March for Babies coming up in May. I'd also like to say a few words. Our mission is to deliver the healthiest beginning so that every generation has the brightest tomorrow. We imagine a world in which every baby has the opportunity to thrive, live the future they choose, and grow up to change the world. With your help and support, we can help save the tiniest babies in New Mexico, and ensure every baby and mother in our state has the opportunity to thrive and live a beautiful future. From 2016 to 2017, the preterm birth rate increased from 10% to 10.3%. In Bernalillo County, the rate has worsened even more drastically, from 10.1% to 10.6%. This is unacceptable.
For 80 years, March of Dimes has made an impact on the health of our nation. We advocate for policies that support moms and ensure access to care for babies. We empower and engage women during pregnancy through our supportive pregnancy care programs, which result in better birth outcomes. We invest and partner with elite researchers, even in New Mexico, to identify the interventions to prevent maternal death and infant loss. We support the families who experience premature birth in the NICU, which is a neonatal intensive care unit, with patient-centered approaches that impact their experience. Thank you.
President Sanchez, esteemed council members and committee guests. On behalf of the March of Dimes, we want to thank you for this proclamation. It means so much to the March of Dimes, and it recognizes the incredible and important mission of the March in Dimes. Moms and babies in this country are facing an urgent health crisis. New data from the federal government shows that the health of pregnant women and babies in the U.S. is getting worse. And for the third year in a row, the rate of premature birth increased. In addition to the human toll, the societal cost of this issue is over $26 billion per year. As of this year, the United States is the most dangerous country in the world to give birth. Premature birth and its complications are the largest contributor to infant mortality in the United States and globally. Now, more than ever, we are looking to move the meter beyond incremental advances.
Thank you. We'd like you to come up and receive the proclamation. This evening, we have a presentation from Chief Geyer regarding the progress of the Department of Justice Court-approved settlement agreement. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Just so happens, we had a status conference this morning with Judge Brack and the monitor team, the monitor and the DLJ team, and it went very well. So I've got some comments I can make in that regard, as well as trying to give you an update of where we're at. I don't know how well you can read this, I know you guys individually have copies of this that hopefully you can refer to. I know the print is small and it's in a colored, so I had some difficulty too. But basically, we have three levels of compliance we have to achieve to get through this court-appointed settlement agreement. The first is primary compliance, which in essence, in simple explanation, is we have all the policies we need to address the issues that have been brought to our attention. As you can see from this report, at this time, Dr. Ginger has reported that we have completed 99.6%. So we're pretty well ahead. The only area we're having some deficiency in right now is developing a force review board policy. We're actually revising that. On the far right, you'll see that that's the little red line at the bottom. That's the one area that we still don't have any work done in that regard. We are have, we are have a new process being developed, and we hope to get that out as soon as possible, hopefully before the end of this year, have it developed and then in place after the first of the year. Secondary compliance is basically is, once we have the policies in place, we have to disseminate them to the officers and to the supervisors in the field and throughout the department, and basically implement that program, whatever the policy requires. It could be use of force, it could be other aspects that they've addressed with misconduct and whatnot. But the important thing is we get it out there to them, and they have got it out in the field. We're at that particular compliance, we're at 75.4%, which means that it's out there. Most of the policies that we developed are out there 75%. The last area, which is the most important, because that's the overall operational compliance, that's when we have not only the policies... It's also important for everybody to remember where we started. In November 2017, the monitors' report said, and I'll quote, "Delays in policy generate delays in training, which lead to delays in adequate supervisory processes, which are the definition of noncompliance." This is what we walked into a year ago, delays and dysfunction. Policies had been adopted and crossed off a checklist, but they weren't working for our community or our officers. It seemed like APD and the city had difficult and contentious relationship with the monitors and the DLJ, which we, and probably were actually working against them rather than engaging them with them to create real and obviously positive lasting change. Compare that to where we are now. In this quote from the current report from the monitor, Dr. Ginger said, "We have found the current APD executive staff to be fully committed to CASA compliance processes. Most of the new command and oversight cadres also appear to be fully committed to moving APD forward in its compliance efforts. We have found extremely attentive audiences for our compliance process advice, and in most cases, APD has moved forward adroitly as it implements responses to that advice." So we embrace change. We invested resources, and we're applying lessons that we learned from the monitors and best practices from other departments that have also evolved through similar transformations. We have to get these policies right. We have to get the training right, and we need to develop sound processes to ensure accountability. We are being much more methodical these days, more data-based, more strategic, and we're also looking at these other departments as for best practices for helping us be successful in accomplishing our own transformation. But keep in mind, we're also tailoring these to our individual needs. We're also busting the myth that we have to choose between fighting crime and complying with this DLJ agreement. During the same period that we started being committed to transformation to constitutional policing, we've also saw encouraging downward trends in overall crime. Here are a few other of our major accomplishments. Following the advice of the monitors, we recruited from the outside the organization, Angela Byrd, to run our police academy. We have struggled with this with the DLJ in the past and the monitors' expectations for training. Commander Byrd has direct, successful experience in curriculum development, delivery, and assessment. She has been very successful thus far, and the monitors are pleased with her efforts. Mayor Keller helped us create the Compliance Bureau, which we also thank members of the council for ensuring that we had the resources to staff it up. We came together, craft a new use-of-force policy, the first in a suite of six that needed to be revised because they just weren't working for our officers in the field as they existed. Although we have a lot of work to do still, we're making strong movement toward community-based policing, problem-oriented policing practices to make sure that we design to address community concerns and work with the community to resolve those. We've reorganized our internal affairs processes designed to improve the overall quality of our internal investigations. Again, there's still a lot of work to do. But I'm more confident than ever that we can ensure that now that all our officers have the tools, and more importantly, the motivation, to always practice constitutional community policing. We're in the middle, middle right now revising our final aspects of our use-of-force policy suite. We have the main force, use-of-force policy, the first in the suite, done and ready to go, and the rest are soon to follow. We just asked for a deadline today. We're hoping to get those completely done and improved throughout the whole process by the end of January. With those policies in place, we then have to adjust the training, that's the next phase. We should have training out there, hopefully by the first of March. We have to adapt training in much more extensive process than we did before. It has, we had issues where there were gaps in training. We have to make sure it's consistent, and as Dr. Ginger says, it's ready to go, not before its time. And critically important is that we hire new officers and keep up the momentum we have made so far in fighting crime. With more officers, we can also institute more true community policing, getting officers block to block out there in the field to engage with the public as we work to make the city safer. Council President Sanchez, members of the council, we truly thank you for your support in making sure that we have the resources to recruit, retain, and equip our officers. I'm now going to ask Dr., or Dr. James Lewis, yes, to say a few words about, from his perspective, on community policing, and then we'll both stand for questions. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis? Welcome, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. President Sanchez, member of the council, as you know, Mayor Keller and Chief Geier have made major commitments to integrating community policing in everything we do at APD. Part of that was creating my position to work with and within the community to keep the objective eye of the reform process. As a representative of the administration and the department, I see the rewards of that commitment every day when I'm out in a community visiting with individuals. It is gratifying to see monitors acknowledge the commitment as well. I want to read a passage from the monitors' report. APD is now actively working to ensure that community participation, input, and access are folded into the mix of policymaking, training development, goal-setting, infield processes and tactics, supervision, command decision-making, and program assessment and evidence is evidence of the upcoming and updating of all the development of the policies that they are making. APD command staff appears clearly committed to the department transformation, involving the integration of community policing principles throughout the organization. The transformation requires, quote, "a culture change." That is a mouthful. So they've indicated that a culture change is needed and necessary. In addition to, they're driven by and revise of the policies, and also reflecting new policies, and the active consistence of the impartial supervision, meaning that the supervision that they're looking at has to be impartial. If you have people that have biases, it will not work. So doing that assessment, that evaluation of impartiality, I think is very, very important. In addition to that, in conjunction with the U.S. Attorney's Office, we've also began to set in high-level discussion concerning strategies to promote, again, culture change and to foster a better environment for further compliance with the CASA requirements. As long as APD listens to and work with the community, very key, if I can just say that again, as long as APD listens to and work with the community, we will continue to see more trust in our officers as they make our community a safe place to be. We still have work to do in improving our community policing councils. As APD steps up and set up the staff that they really need to engage in the community block by block by block, that is what the intent and the purpose is. Also, I would like to show my appreciation and thank you on behalf of all the city councillors in reference to giving the APD the resources that they need to do their job. Last but not least, as we're looking at community policing, we were in court this morning, Judge Brack had indicated, have we ever had a town hall meeting? The answer was that we had not. So I wanted an extended invitation to each and every one of the councillors this coming Saturday, November the 10th, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the east side of the convention center in the Brazos Room, we will be having our first town hall. We will have Judge Brack, not Judge Brack, we will have the monitor there. We will also have Department of Justice, the chief will be there, we'll have our staff, the mayor will be there. And we're actually inviting a lot of folks from the faith community, from the neighborhood associations, so we can embrace and reach out to the community as a whole. I want to thank you for allowing me to come and have a few remarks on behalf of APD and the city.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Are there any questions for Chief Geier or Mr. Lewis?
I'd like to make just a couple of comments, Chief Geier. I met about two hours ago with Dr. Ginger, the monitor, and he was very impressed with the work that you and your team have done in coming in conformance with the settlement agreement. I mean, primary compliance now is at 99.6%, secondary compliance is at 75.4%, and operational is already at 60%. So we've come a long way in a short period of time. But he admired the work that you have done and said that you have been one of the best chiefs that he has ever worked with on a settlement agreement. So I want to personally thank you for all your work and the progress that we are making.
Mr. Presidents, thank you. I can assure you that we're going to continue and see this through to the finish, and with your help, we're going to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, let's go and move on. We have another presentation. This is going to be from Claire Dudley, from Family and Community Services regarding youth summer programs. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. President Sanchez and members of the council, I'm really pleased to be here this evening. My name is Claire Dudley Chavez, and I have the great pleasure of serving as the Education Policy Advisor for Mayor Keller. I am also placed in the Family and Community Services Department. I'm joined by my really talented colleague, Kristin Chavez-Smith, and a number of outstanding young people who worked for the city during the summer. And we are very pleased to be able to share with you some findings from the initial First Annual State of Summer Report, which I'd be happy to share with you while we have copies for you. Thank you. Thanks so much. So we recognize, and you all know, that the city of Albuquerque has a real pivotal role in serving youth in Albuquerque. We know that expanding access to effective youth programs in order to keep youth out of, excuse me, off the streets and out of harms way is a real top priority for the executive and also for all of you. And we want to thank you all for your support for this significant effort by providing approximately $1 million in additional funds in the FY19 budget. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge Counselor Jones for the establishment of the Youth Activities Task Force. Thank you, Counselor. We also know that we really need to focus on the West Side, where we've had such an expansion of population growth over the last few years. And this summer, and summer is moving forward, the city is committed to making sure that families don't have to wait in line forever to be able to sign up and participate in a wide array of summer programs. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about what happened in the summer of '18. So we have the Summer '18 by the numbers. We had over 27,000 young people registered to take part in such a wide array of programs and opportunities offered at community centers, offered at swimming pools, offered at museums, throughout our city. Throughout the summer, more than 380,000 young people took part in a summer activity, some more than one. These programs were offered, 119 of them were offered at 263 sites around Albuquerque. And one of the great things about summer programs is that many of them provide meals for families and for kids. And we provided over 330,000 meals this summer. So I'm going to move on now to talk a little bit about some more of the impact of this first summer in office of the Mayor Keller's administration, and we know that many departments took steps to expand opportunities for youth and for families. We extended additional summer spots at our community centers, which increased their enrollment by 31%. We started teen nights, I've been calling them Friday fun nights, at community centers around Albuquerque, and more than 500 young people participated in teen nights. And they were at community centers, many of them in your districts. We had glow-in-the-dark dodgeball at Barellis Community Center, Counselor Benton. We had a back-to-school pool party at the Sunport Pool, Counselor Davis, which was great fun. We also had paint night, which was at the Factory on Fifth Street Art Space, Counselor Borrego. So we had an array of opportunities for young people on Friday nights so that they would be safe, off the street, and have fun, engaging activities to be a part of. We also extended the pool hours at popular pools around the city, at Wilson Pool, at Rio Grande Pool, at Sierra Vista, and at Sunport. We distributed more than 70,000 free pool passes to young people in Albuquerque, and our swim lessons enrollment increased by 17%. Additionally, we worked to address the transportation needs for young people in Albuquerque, and we distributed 1,500 youth summer bus passes, which we will continue to do so in the future. And we know that it's really important for young people and for children in Albuquerque to have an array of opportunities. They need to be involved in early learning, they need to be involved in outdoor activities and adventures, health and fitness, fun and education, the arts, cultural and community engagement. We know that taking part in these types of programs help kids improve their academic skills, as well as important social, artistic, and athletic skills. We are preparing young people in Albuquerque for success in school, work, and life. And we know that the long-term impact of after-school programs is great. Research and data from hundreds of studies support the positive impact of after-school programs on children's academic and social success. And I just wanted to quote a finding from the CS Mot Foundation, which is really one of the leading research and advocacy organizations nationwide and here in New Mexico for out-of-school time activities. And they quote, "Students who attend after-school and summer programs are better prepared for work and life. They attend school more, they make gains in reading and in math, they improve their grades, and they have higher graduation rates. And they develop positive social skills and improve their behavior during the school day." Now I'm going to turn it over to Kristin.
We're also excited to serve youth in a different capacity, which is in employment. So as you can see in the report, we actually hired 1,090 youth staff this summer. The average age was 18. The majority of those staff were hired in two departments, Family and Community Services and Parks and Recreation, but Senior Affairs and Cultural Services also hire a number of youth staff. 76% of those staff were youth of color, and the majority of them actually live on the West Side, so in 87121, 87120, 87105. We had an increase in hiring this year of 310 youth, and the value that they have is significant, and they will, a few of them will speak to that in a few minutes. The first thing, a new thing we did this summer as well is to survey parents and staff after the summer programs were over. We actually came together, multiple departments came up with the survey together so that we were collecting the same sort of data from all of the parents, all of the staff, and all of the kids attending youth programs. So as you can see overwhelmingly, parents were thrilled with the programs offered. We're working to release a full report on those survey results that will be out later this year. Moving forward, we have established One Albuquerque Youth Connect. What this is, is an interdepartmental working group that is made up of Family and Community Services, Parks and Recreation, Cultural Services, Senior Affairs, Transit, as well as the Office of Equity and Inclusion, the Department of Technology and Innovation, and the mayor's office. The mission of Albuquerque Youth Connect is to enrich the lives of people of Albuquerque and create a community of safety and inclusion by connecting Albuquerque's youth to opportunities in the community. Basically, we just come together every other Friday and come up with really great new initiatives to serve youth. So on that note, some of the new exciting things that are coming for youth in the city of Albuquerque, we're going to start releasing Youth Connect quarterly newsletters, the first expected we were collecting the same sort of data from all of the parents, all of the staff, and all of the kids attending youth programs. So as you can see overwhelmingly, parents were thrilled with the programs offered. We're working to release a full report on those survey results that will be out later this year. Moving forward, we have established One Albuquerque Youth Connect. What this is, is an interdepartmental working group that is made up of Family and Community Services, Parks and Recreation, Cultural Services, Senior Affairs, Transit, as well as the Office of Equity and Inclusion, the Department of Technology and Innovation, and the mayor's office. The mission of Albuquerque Youth Connect is to enrich the lives of people of Albuquerque and create a community of safety and inclusion by connecting Albuquerque's youth to opportunities in the community. Basically, we just come together every other Friday and come up with really great new initiatives to serve youth. So on that note, some of the new exciting things that are coming for youth in the city of Albuquerque, we're going to start releasing Youth Connect quarterly newsletters, the first expected to be out right after Thanksgiving. It'll just have lots of information on different programs that different departments are offering and all sorts of new fun things that will be going on. We're also going to be conducting teen focus groups. This is going to happen in December. It's in conjunction with ABC Community School Partnership, as well as APS. We had, as Claire said, a great teen night program this summer, but we want to make it better. We want to figure out what teens want to be doing at our community centers, what the barriers are getting to those programs, as well as where do they get the information? How do we market to teens better? So we'll be conducting those focus groups in December. We also want everyone to save the date for the first annual One ABQ Youth Job and Volunteer Fair. All departments will be coming together on February 2nd, 2019, at the convention center to offer opportunities to youth. We'll also be bringing in a lot of our partners, who will also be conducting interviews, mock interviews. We'll actually be doing on-the-spot interviews. We'll be helping with the NeoGov application process. So that'll be a really fun, exciting event. Okay. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for all your work. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Counselor Davis.
Ms. Chavez and Ms. Smith, would you introduce your guests over here? I assume they've worked with us this summer, but they came all the way down. I'd love to hear a little bit about what they did very quickly.
Yes. So from Borellos Community Center, we have David Gallegos, he lives in Counselor Penya's district, and Sierra Gomez, who lives in Counselor Sanchez's district. From Taylor Ranch Community Center, we have Elias Chavez in Counselor Benton's district, and Ariel Moss in Counselor Jones's district. And we have Christina Cabasas and Ulpiano Oscones from Counselor Davis and Counselor Penya's district, representing Los Duranas Community Center. And they're all actually still employed, working currently with the city.
Great.
Thank you.
And I had one quick question. I know on the west side, and you talked about that briefly, there's always been a backup of people that are on a waiting list. Was that resolved this summer, or was there still a waiting list for some of our kids?
We took active steps to address the waitlist. We extended the number of slots at west side community centers, and we actually increased enrollment at the west side community centers, yes.
Great news, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on Item 4, Economic Development Discussion. There is none this evening. We are now on Item 5, Administration Question and Answers. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Winter, Counselor Benton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Royal, I wanted to ask you about a grant that I think was received by the previous administration. It's called the Living Cities Grant. I think it was for about $100,000. And just information about where it went, if we received it, and what it was used for, and if, you know, if you need to get back with me, you can do that.
Mr. President and Counselor Winter, yes, that grant was in the Department of Economic Development, and we'll get you a full report on the grant and its uses, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Benton.
I have a question for the administration about the census and the Complete Count Committee, and where we stand with that. And I believe we've got someone, Ms. Veronica Azarte de Reyes is here also. If she would come up, she might want to be available to answer any questions you have. But I just wanted to find out where we are. My understanding with the census and the need for the Complete Count Committee and getting it in place is that that needs to be in place early in 2019. So we're rapidly approaching what's considered to be the normal deadline for that. And for those in the audience who may not know what we're talking about here, of course, the census is done every 10 years. What's important about the census from the city's standpoint, from our communities and state's standpoint, is that we get a complete count of everyone. That includes immigrants, people who are undocumented, includes homeless people. All of the above are part of the count. And if we don't have an accurate count vis-à-vis other states' efforts to get an accurate count, we'll be left behind in terms of receiving our fair share of federal resources, programs, important things that matter to us. And just as an example of some of those programs that are funded by the federal government that reflect the count, in other words, these figures would change. If we were under-reported, these figures would be less. But just as an example of some of the things that we really need in this state and in our community, medical assistance programs such as Medicaid, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance, SNAP, highway planning and construction funds, Medicare, local education agencies, national school lunch programs, Head Start, Section 8 housing vouchers, all sorts of things of that nature, foster care, childcare and development, all sorts of things that we're always talking about up here and at the city, and things that we know that we have a responsibility to provide in the community. If we're not, if we don't get an accurate count, we will suffer. And I know that the census bureau, I've been in touch with folks in Denver at the Census Bureau, and I know that contacts have been made, but I just kind of wanted to get an update from the administration as to where we stand with that. The Complete Count Committee is a volunteer committee from throughout the community. Ideally, it includes APS, UNM, you know, there was higher education, public education, nonprofit sector, religious sector, et cetera. All of those kind of need to come together to create a Complete Count Committee. And so I just wanted to see where we are with that.
Ms. Mayor.
Sure. Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, yes, we share your belief that this is a really important effort. I attended a kickoff meeting where some of the census folks came in a few months ago, and we've begun the work on the Complete Count Committee. Katie Duhigg, our city clerk, as well as Miriam Deemer in her office, and Brittany Ortiz, our deputy director of the Office of Equity and Inclusion, are all involved in that effort, and we'd be happy to give you updates beyond that after this meeting.
Thank you. And I also neglected to say that we had some of our first meetings, and I know the administration was represented at those meetings over at the Council of Governments, and that the nature of our community here, of course, is our relationship with the county and the city together, working together very important. Our relationship with APS and UNM is very important. And how about that? I mean, are we in contact with those other entities? I mean, at those early meetings that I attended, it sounded like everybody was on board to do this, but nobody was really saying who was leading the charge.
Yes, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, we are working with all of the other agencies. In fact, City Clerk Duhigg has a meeting later this week, and we can give you an update after that.
Okay. Well, great. And I know Counselor Borrego is, you know, prepared to have a resolution ready to go, and we have that committee identified and so forth. And so I wanted everyone here to be aware of it. I think when it gets rolling, we all have a responsibility as well to help publicize it with our own constituents and so forth. But Mrs. Azarte de Reyes, would you like to just briefly speak from your perspective? I know that you represent the Dallas office and the Denver region, right? So.
Yes. Good evening, President Sanchez and members of the council. My name is Veronica Carzate, and I am the partnership specialist with the Census Bureau here, working in New Mexico. I'm stationed in Albuquerque, and I'm currently traveling to the different municipalities across our state, because as Counselor Benton mentioned, we want to make sure that all the elected officials are aware that the census campaign, it's already started here in our state. We have the opportunity to get people in our communities counted every 10 years, and we want to make sure that we take full advantage of this opportunity. The census count gives us not only political representation, but also the benefit of the federal funding that we so much need for different programs. It affects our daily lives in so many different levels, and sometimes we're not aware of that. So we're forming the Complete Count Committees. I am working with Brittany Ortiz and with Frank Miraball from the city, but we need to garner as much support from everyone to make sure that we take full advantage of this, this annual opportunity. Because if we miss people in some areas that are identified as hard-to-count communities, if we miss those folks, we're not going to have a chance to get them counted until 2030. And 10 years is a long time to go without that federal funding, without those resources that we need to secure for our people. So I'm working in communication with the offices of Counselor Borrego and Counselor Benton, and we're going to move forward with the resolution, but we also want to make sure that we're reaching out to all of you for financial support, for any other assistance that you can provide to make sure that we're counting everyone here in our communities. And I want to make sure that, you know, I'm your local resource. I'm here to keep you informed and answer questions that you might have as we prepare the community for Census 2020.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you for speaking this evening, and thank you, Counselor Benton, for raising this issue. I've been working on this issue for about two months now, trying to get resources and having some meetings, a meeting I believe scheduled with you next week.
Yes.
And what's really important about the census this year and this go-round is that a lot of the work is going to be done online. And I think, you know, not everybody has access to computers, so there's definitely going to be a lot of work to encourage people to come forward and get that information back. And it'll, you know, we're going to have to work with the administration to ensure that we do it quickly, because, and I hope to have that resolution completed fairly soon. But actually, the counting, I believe, starts in the early spring, like March, April. Is that correct?
March 23rd of 2020.
Yeah, so we have to, as a council, move fairly quickly once we get this resolution finalized. And I'd love to have you join me, Counselor Benton, in doing this work. And what I was saying is that, you know, there's always language barriers. There's these electronic technological barriers that unfortunately, you know, people, not everybody, especially even the elderly people, they don't use computers, people that don't have access. I mean, so ensuring a complete count, as Counselor Benton indicated, is really important in terms of the resources that are allocated to New Mexico and to our community. And so, you know, we need to ensure, and it's been a long time, if you all remember, since we've had a census count. The last one was in 2000 and then 2010. And so, you know, we really need to ensure that these counts are accurate and that people are not afraid to come forward and to be counted. So thank you, Counselors President Sanchez and Counselor Benton.
And thank you for being here.
Yes.
Mr. President, if I could just, just one quick thing, just to be clear what this Complete Count Committee is, again, it's a volunteer committee, but we can all help find the right people to populate that committee. And that committee, once it's created, will serve to motivate, you know, they're a cheerleader for the census and they're, to help motivate people to participate, educating people about it and informing, and just staying on top of the whole effort. So it's a very important component, and we appreciate the work of the administration on it. And I've told them, and I'm sure we all would agree, that we're happily also help with the county and bringing in other partners of all, from all walks of life to participate. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from this council? I have one que, you're all done, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for the administration. Over a year ago, and this has gone on now for a long time, is the RFP for the public access channels was going out, and it took a long time to put a proposal together to put out to the public. I think the public waited patiently for a long time. They finally got the RFPs out. There were several companies that bid on the RFP, and the administration made the decision to basically go back and start over again. What was the rationale for that? Because U-Public has been out of compliance now for over a year, and they still remain the contractor doing the work.
Counsel President Sanchez, thank you for that question. There were a couple of reasons that we had to put this RFP back out, or we had to pull it back, and no one really loved this decision, but we felt we had to make it. The primary one was that the technical specifications related to the RFP changed as a result of some of the negotiations with Comcast. So there are some requirements that relate to some of the new high-definition channels and so forth that we simply didn't cover in the existing RFP, and we felt it would be unfair to then impose those requirements on a winning bidder after that. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney Aguilar, if he has anything to add.
City Attorney Aguilar.
Counsel President Sanchez, counselors, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on. Any other questions for the administration? We can now move on. We are now on Item 6, the Journal. Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the October 15th Journal.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the October 15th Journal. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I can read that.
Go ahead.
I move the approval of the October 18th Journal.
Okay.
And we have a motion and a second for the approval of the October 18th Journal. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. We are now under Item 7, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R-97 and placing it on the November 19th council agenda for final action. R-97 is adopting a vision statement, revised five-year goals for the city of Albuquerque and adopting desired community conditions for each goal. This will require two-thirds vote. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penya. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And I also move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing OC-17 and placing it on the November 19th council agenda for final action. OC-17 is regarding the selection of the Director of Council Services, and that will also require two-thirds vote. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. Reports in committee, there is none this evening. We are now on deferrals, deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Gibson, Committee Substitute 3-050.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move for a deferral on Committee Substitute 050. This is amending the City of Albuquerque Code of Ordinances, Article 6 and Chapter 13, ROA 1994, the Pond Broker Ordinance. I'm going to move a deferral until January 7th, 2019.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones for deferral until January 7th. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on O-40. That is amending Chapter 2, Article 4, Part 13, ROA 1994, the Filing of Petition Ordinances, and amending Chapter 2, Article 4, ROA 1994, to add the maintenance of campaign and off-year ordinances. I move a deferral until the February 4th, 2019 meeting. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penya. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For those individuals that are here tonight on the consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board of commissions, please stand if your name, if you are here in the audience and be recognized for wanting to participate in one of our boards. You haven't been voted on yet, but please stand and be recognized. You are on the consent agenda. Thanks for your willingness to serve. Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That passes unanimously. And those that are willing to serve or wanting to serve, congratulations. Okay, before we move on to general public comment, we are going to go to Counselor Gibson's bill, Committee Substitute O-21. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you doing this. We have some people here who have worked on this bill and are here to answer any questions for us, and this really helps them out, that we've moved this up on the agenda. So as... really helps them out that we've moved this up on the, the agenda. So, as, let me just introduce this by saying, this is part of the recommendations that were presented in the report for abandoned and vacant homes. You might remember last year, that came before this body and was approved, I believe it was unanimously. And this, amending this bill, this ordinance rather, does several things that I'm going to go ahead and let staff talk about because they can do it much better than I can. And I also do have two amendments.
Why don't you move the bill first?
Okay, so I, I will move the bill. It is Committee, Committee Substitute O-1821.
We have a motion and a second. Who is going to be presenting for staff?
Uh, the staff, Ms. Taylor?
Mr. President.
Go on, proceed.
Counselor. There's only one floor amendment. Just wanted to correct that. This floor amendment, first of all, rescinds the Committee Amendment Number 2. There was an error in both Committee Amendment Number 1 and Number 2 are exactly the same. And so, we are rescinding Number 2. Then we're making some changes on page 40, lines 28 through 32. We're making a change to state every owner of a rental property found to be violating any of the provisions of the Housing Code and failing or neglecting to comply with any orders issued pursuant to any section thereof shall register the property and pay a one-time $25 registration fee. Such registration shall be made on a form provided by the department and verified by the owner or responsible party. Any changes to the information listed below will require an updated registration with a $25 registration fee. We're also on page four, deleting lines four through seven and replacing it with the following language. Department, the definition is the department tasked by the mayor with the administration and enforcement of this code or any department that may be subsequently charged with the responsibility of the enforcement of this code. Next paragraph on page five, we're deleting lines 23 through 27 and replacing with the following language. Inspector, the definition is any city employee tasked with the enforcement of this code or any subsequent position charged with the responsibility of making inspections to enforce the provisions of the Housing Code adopted by this jurisdiction. On page five, we're deleting lines four through six and replacing with the following language. Definition for hotel, motel, a building or a group of buildings in which sleeping accommodations are offered to the public and intended primarily for rental for temporary occupancy by persons on an overnight basis, not including bed and breakfast establishments. This corresponds to the current IDO definition. And lastly, on page 19, keep Paragraph K, lines 23 through 27, which were deleted in error.
Okay, basically she has read floor amendment number one. Do you want to move that?
Yes, I, I'm sorry for, for that. I would like to move Amendment Number 1 to Committee Sub O-1821.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to Committee Substitute O-18-21. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We're back on the bill, and we have one individual signed up to speak, Charles Bennett. Welcome, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, President Sanchez. And councilors, I'm Charlie Bennett, and I live in one of the neighborhoods that will greatly benefit from O-1821. I wish to thank Counselor Gibson and the task force for the time that they've invested in this ordinance. Between 2010 and 2017, most of the teeth had been pulled from code and Safe City Strike Force's abilities to enforce. All that this ordinance lacks is the statutory authority to collect outstanding leads, liens imposed on substandard and deteriorated properties, a set of dentures, if you will. Lean recovery, supported by state statute, should be Albuquerque's next goal to support this ordinance enforcement capabilities. I ask you all to support this ordinance. It's good work, and it's been needed for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. That concludes general public comment on this agenda item. Are there any other questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's more of a comment than a, than a question, but I must say this amendment is, is excellent, and it answers some of the questions I had all along, as in, who are we going to make register? Do we just drive down the street and the building's empty and there's a for rent sign on it? If it doesn't have a for rent sign, all kinds of things. But Counselor Gibson has defined very clearly the definition of violating and how, who will register, and I appreciate that immensely. This has made this something that I can support. When it's open-ended and it doesn't say how you define this, it's pretty much not good policy. So, thank you, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Any other questions? Then Counselor Gibson to close.
Thank you. I just want to recognize, I did this in committee, but we've worked on this, I think, all of this calendar year, at least started in late January, early February. So, obviously, Ms. Taylor, Nicole Taylor, put a lot of work into this, and I'm going, I know I'm going to miss people, but, but I also want to recognize Mr. Bullock from City Legal, who did an awesome, awesome job. Also, our staff attorney, Mr. Melendris, really worked hard on it. Mr. Angelo Mesker, who, you know, you know, without, without him, we couldn't have done any of this. So, and of course, the Director of Planning, Campbell, Director Campbell, and all of his input. So, thank you, everybody. I'm going to put this one to bed, hopefully. And I urge your support.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to Committee Substitute O-18-21. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under general public comment. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half. Then the bell will ring and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining. At the two-minute limit, the light will turn red, meaning your time has expired. So, please respect your two-minute time limit. And the first six speakers I will call out, and please come to, to the front and be prepared to speak, Amy Malek, Simon Polakowski, Reverend Trey Hammond, Art Tenenbaum, Sue Flint, and Andreas Mata. Amy Malek, go on, proceed. Welcome.
Thank you. President Sanchez and members of the council, good evening. I'm Amy Malek, an advocate for people without homes. I'm here to support the proposed Hope Village. Five years ago, I moved to Albuquerque to join the volunteer pastoral care team at what was then St. Martin's Hospitality Center. My job was to spend time in the day shelter, on the grounds outside, and on nearby streets, listening to and building relationships with people seeking shelter, help, and community. During my four years volunteering at Hope Works, and now with a women's group that grew out of that, I have seen the depth of people's despair, faith, and hope as they struggle to stay alive. The great benefit of doing pastoral work at Hope Works was the presence, presence of services on site. When people were ready, I could refer them right there to get expert and compassionate help with the job, clothes, behavioral health, mail storage, and so on. That model has limits. I saw some of our most vulnerable neighbors unable to sustain their progress when with their, when their only option at closing time was to walk out the turquoise gates to sleep on roadways and in alleys. Many people I've worked with now have housing and support, thanks in huge part to your commitment. Many do not, and many cannot. They are the people suffering from mental illness, addiction, violence, and other trauma. They're the ones who live in tents, sleep on cardboard, or splay across sidewalks in North Downtown. These are the ones Hope Village would serve. The project literally would take these most vulnerable people off the streets, yet keep them in the heart of the community where they live now and so desperately want to be accepted as human beings and neighbors. As the city, county agencies, and faith groups collaborate to develop proven, well-designed, and managed projects like Hope Village, I believe we can expect to see an increase in people moving from hopelessness to community. I urge you to support that project.
Thank you. Thank you. Simon Polakowski?
Counsel President, counsel, I've been coming here for over five years on the issue of public access television. I'd like to thank Counsel President for the information. I request that the administration immediately terminate its contract with U Public. One year is far too long to operate, or pretend to operate, a public access channel and not fulfilling your contractual obligations. This would never happen in the private sector. It shouldn't happen in the public sector. So, I believe that the administration, with compliance of counsel, should immediately terminate their counsel. This has been, I've been claiming a fraud that's been going on now for over five years. It needs to stop immediately. Many people come down here requesting, you know, time. They have two minutes. Public access allows the average person, close to an hour, to get their point across to an audience that doesn't know if they exist or not, but you can exist through public access. And again, you know, like I noticed this today, I saw three uniformed police officers here. When the controversy involving APD was at full swing, the whole side there was filled with uniformed officers, like vultures looking at carry-on at council. I noticed three uniformed officers today, unless everybody there is undercover. I'm going, where are all the policemen that used to come here when this controversy first started? Where's Mr. Willoughby? Is he undercover here? And see, we don't have a chance. There's no media here. There's no four, seven, 13, whatever. Let the average citizen see what's really going on. Let them have a podium where they can communicate with the rest of themselves because they believe that they're all on. Public access gives us a place to cause controversy. Counselor, Counselor Don Harris said we don't want any controversy. The only controversy he was interested in were that of his electoral opponents. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Trey Hammond, welcome.
President Sanchez and city councilors, my name is Trey Hammond. I'm the pastor of La Mesa Presbyterian Church in the International District, which is capable of being represented by Counselor Davis. I also serve on the Board of Heading Home, which has housed, in conjunction with the City of Albuquerque's strong support, hundreds of the most medically vulnerable persons experiencing homelessness over the past six years. I'm here to speak in favor of the passage of the Development Agreement with the City of Albuquerque and Hope Works for Hope Village, a 42-unit, single-site supportive housing project. This is a groundbreaking effort for a city and state and is predicated on the Housing First Model, one that has proven to be the best way to address chronic homelessness with permanent solutions. I understand how there might be concern about how a big project like this will impact the surrounding community. Some years ago, I was the president of the board of the nonprofit that started the Albuquerque Opportunity Center on Candelaria in 2005. There was quite a bit of concern from the local business and neighborhood associations about what that transitional program might do to the community. But we were able to navigate a way between the, the organization and those agencies and interested parties that ultimately turned the tide from stiff resistance to collaboration. I think that Hope Works is such a good-faith nonprofit developer and has a strong track record and will work to ensure good outcomes, not only for its residents, but for the surrounding community. Albuquerque has made great strides in recent years in addressing homelessness. Hope Village, I think, is a significant next step, and I urge you to support the development arrangement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Hammond. Art Tenenbaum, followed by Sue Flint, followed by Andreas Mata.
Hello again, truculent troublemakers. It's a distinct displeasure to stand before you, the governing body of your disorderly and largely self-serving establishment. ART is the victim of the new bus blues. That was a headline in the newspaper in January of this year, nine months ago. Last week, the mayor disclosed that these pieces of garbage, stuck together with globs of undercoating, have faulty brake systems. In August and September or October, there were drivers driving around these 60-foot electric motor vehicles with faulty brake systems. Transit Director Bernie Toon said this should never happen. The front brakes only worked. The middle axle brakes in this fleet-wide issue did not work, nor the, the rear brakes. So, while ABQ Ride, City of Albuquerque Transit Department personnel, were driving around with television camera people aboard, pointing out abusive, law-breaking drivers turning through the reserved bus-only lanes that haven't been used all year, these 60-foot-long vehicles were posing a public safety threat, a severe hazard. As a matter of fact, I almost got run over by one of them in early October in downtown Albuquerque at Central Avenue and 8th Street. BYD Manufacturing's Senior VP said in a television interview around nine months ago that BYD is a victim of their own success. It's crocodile tears. There are countless victims of the ART fiasco, the ART failure. Everything about it has failed. But I don't think Albuquerque Transit Department can claim to be one of the victims. To hear the Transit Department tell it, all the problems with this absolutely failed project are caused by the public, I think you should get rid of the ABQ Ride spokesperson and give that money for compensation-
Thank you, Mr. Tenenbaum. Your time is expired.
-to attract a worthy transit director-
Mr. Tenenbaum, your time is expired.
I know that, Ken, but you could have let me finish.
You're completed. You're done. Time is expired. Next speaker, Sue Flint, followed by Andreas Mata, followed by Tad Neminsky. This is your first warning?
How many warnings do I get?
You get two. This is your second warning. We're asking that security escort you out the building. Sue Flint?
No, I'm not going.
Don't push me around.
I'm not pushing you. I'm just getting-
What?
Let's go. I'll start heading to the exit.
You can keep your hands off me.
Sorry. I'll start heading out. Yes, do nicely. I gave you three warnings. Do you have any-
No, you just said three. He gave me two. Oh, he's saying you gave me three warnings. Keep your hands off of me.
Sir, I'm going, sir.
He said you gave me three warnings.
Mr. Tenenbaum, you, you're being escorted out of the building.
You only gave me two.
I did give you a second warning.
I'm telling you, keep your hands off.
You will not touch the top.
Mr. Neminsky, you're out of order.
Sir.
You are on the outside.
This is your second warning, Mr. Neminsky. We're asking that security also escort you out the building.
Let's go.
I won't exercise passive resistance. So, if you guys can be gentle with me, I'm going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This map is a 2009 AGIS map that the City of Albuquerque used when it was starting its review for the North I-25 Sector Development Plan. On this map here, it shows that we are in SU-1, well, in SU-1. That's it. On this site plan that we had for our community, this shows here that we are in SU-1. When the city decided to change us, the city drew up its own map and they changed us right there, to, right there, to an SU-1-MH Park. And that is prohibited by law. We're real property. So, there's an error in the North I-25 Sector Development Plan that I brought before you as an amendment back in probably 2012. This here shows what I was reading the last time. It's part of the legislation when you go through the process. So, this is an EPC testimony where Richard Deneen, who was the planning director, spoke on behalf, saying that they were going to transition my area out to redevelop and that it was going to be a commerce park. In this North I-25 Sector Development Plan, right here, is where it actually says that it is going to go through and take my property. Here's the map that Ron Bohannon did not put on the viewer, but spoke of, that extends Samhail that goes through my property. And the whole thing that I want to say on this real quick is there was fraud in this. I brought this up when the ABC-Z and the IDO was done. And last time I spoke about it was about the redistricting. I found it really suspicious that a planning director, a year after he steps down and has put things in place, files for the redistricting. Another thing I was going to share is that I was threatened by Kurt Browning when I left here the last time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we proceed, I've asked that Mr. Namenski also be escorted out the building. Next speaker will be Andreas Mata.
No. You, if you don't have constitutional rights, you have to go. Take no constitutional. No. I'm going to shake you. No. 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 You are not a constitutional. No. Good.
We are going to take a five-minute recess.